The United States of America, and to the Republic, for its fans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, this is, this is one of our favorite parts of any school board meeting, and I want to welcome you all here, and I want to just jump right into the fun, so.
Yeah.
Dr. Harrison?
Yeah, well, good evening, everyone. I wish I had one of those T-shirts that look pretty cool.
Yes.
Wear that with pride, of course. So tonight, we have the distinct pleasure of honoring a number of our student athletes for their great accomplishments this fall. And to do so, I'd like to invite Mr. McCormick up to the mic. And Mr. Cohen is here as well. You just applaud with everybody else? All right, great. So, Mr. McCormick, if you could introduce our students, our coaches that are in attendance, and let's see accolades fly.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good evening. It's a nice event to come here at least three times a year usually and honor our student athletes. And tonight, we're honoring a number of athletes who were all section, state qualifiers, and sectional champions. We have a couple coming in right now. Perfect, perfect timing. Our first athlete that we'd like to recognize is a member of the boys' soccer team, Anthony Avellino. Anthony was a three-year starter on defense, a player who puts his absolute best effort forward into every practice and every game. He was a captain this year. His coach, Bernie Keating, says he has grown each season, and his speed and strength have made him into a shutdown defender. He plans on playing in college, although he's not decided where yet, and this year, he was selected all section for boys' soccer. Anthony Avellino.
You gotta lead by example now, captain.
Well done.
Great job, man.
Congratulations. Did I get to hand this to you?
Congratulations.
Our next athlete, I think, just came from a basketball game. This is Mia Mascone, who was a member of our volleyball team. She was captain of the team, then went to the sectionals as the number 11 seed, and she played two matches on the road, the 11 seed versus the 6 seed, they won 3-1, and then they took on the number 3 seed, Pot Valley, and swept them in three straight to take them into the sectional semifinals where they gave Ardsley, who went on to win it, a very tough contest. She led the team with 83 aces, 323 kills, and 278 digs. She is committed to Brown for lacrosse, and she was voted all section for girls' volleyball this fall. Mia Mascone.
Great job, man.
Great to watch you play volleyball.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next up is a girls' soccer player. Four-year starter, part of a team that went to the sectional finals twice and the semifinals once. She was a senior captain. She had career totals of 21 goals and 36 assists. She was all-league in 2016, sorry, 2015, 2017, 2018, and all-section in 2017 and 2018. She is committed to play at U Penn next fall. She was voted all-section and Elite 12 for girls' soccer, which is a very prestigious award, taking into account skills as well as academics. This is Miranda Farmen. Our next two athletes are part of a merged swim team, Shetty, as it's known, Sleepy Hollow, Edgemont, Hastings, and Irvington. This year, that merged swim team won the section and finished second overall in New York State by only three points. Two swimmers are here tonight who led that, led that team from Irvington. First up is Grace Brady. She was all-league. She qualified for the sectionals in the 200 free and the 500 free, and at the sectional meet, Grace qualified for states, went on to states in the 200 freestyle, playing 54th in New York State. Grace Brady. Our next swimmer came to us this year, transferring in from Horace Greeley, but made an impact right away. She was all-league and all-section. She qualified for the sectionals and states in the 200 individual medley and the 100 breaststroke. She was also on the 200 and 400 freestyle relay teams with members of the other schools. Ava placed seventh in the 200 IM and ninth in the 100 breaststroke in the New York State Championships. The 400 freestyle placed fifth overall, and the 200 freestyle relay, led by Ava, came in first place in the state, a state champion relay. She was all-league and all-section and All-American consideration. Ava was also the Enterprise Swimmer of the Year, Ava Franks. I'd also like to recognize, in this kind of merged conglomerate, Irvington does have our own swim coach. She is a member of our science department. She's here tonight. She has done a fantastic job, and that's Stephanie Schilling. Next up is cross-country. A lot of people think of cross-country maybe as an individual sport, but it's really a team sport, and the team this year, Chris Barry was the coach who's here tonight as well, and I, I think Coach Barry started talking last year about how excited he was going into this year about this team. They finished second in the league at the, at Woodlands, but I still felt Coach Barry thought this team was going to be something special. So they kind of rallied, they finished, they were supposed to be a dark horse in the sectional race with Pleasantville and Dobbs Ferry being mentioned, and maybe even Briar Cliff, but they pulled out the sectional championship by 21 points, which is a large margin when it comes to sectionals, over Briar Cliff in what was supposed to be a close race. Their team finish put them fifth out of 50 Section 1 teams when they merged, all the scores and all the times from the AA schools all the way down through the C, so fifth out of 50th. They went on to the state meet and finished third, and one of the things Coach Barry mentioned was the sixth man, or sixth person to finish, beat out Port Jefferson's number five man to gain that third-place finish by one point over two other teams. So truly was a team effort for our boys' cross-country sectional champions and third in the state. And I'd like to call up those individuals who are members of that sectional championship team that went on to states. First, Lucas Torano. Aiden's brother Ian McClure couldn't be here tonight, but he was a member of the team, and he was also a captain. Last two runners were recognized as all-county, Alex Bajorkvinsen.
Otherwise, this is a great opportunity, if you want to celebrate in the library, or you can stick around where we will be doing some district updates, which Dr. Harrison
And our last runner, Ryan Flanagan, not only all-county, but also Enterprise Runner of
and the dependents provide. Oh, it looks like somebody want to go.
the Year. We could have our, come up front for a picture?
Thank you for coming.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations.
With coaches.
Thank you.
With coaches.
Congratulations. Thank you. 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 Thank you.[746.16]
And we couldn't safely get them out there because of traffic and weather conditions, but also because of the fact that people had abandoned their vehicles on roadways, which made for a dangerous situation. But what did happen through our communication with the Terrytown Police Department was that they actually went out and performed welfare checks to our buses that were stuck in the snow or sitting in traffic to make sure that all of our kids were okay. So, big thank you to them. And then importantly, to our bus drivers and our bus monitors, who sat on the buses with our kids, who cared for our kids, helped them feel comfortable. And when we think about it, we had high school kids that were stuck on buses, but we also had some of our youngest children on buses. And they cared for them, made them feel comfortable. And those that didn't have their own mobile devices, they were handing their phones over to our students and letting them call their parents and we're giving updates along the way. So where it was an unfortunate situation, it was another one of those Pride Irvington moments, Proud Irvington moments, where everybody rose to the occasion and did what was good for the welfare of our kids. But I think, again, what I do want to highlight, this last emergency on Tu- last Tuesday, was an example of some of the learning and takeaways that came out of that. And I hope there's some good examples of enhanced communication and planning that helped us to really connect kids with their parents in a safe time.
I just, I just want to comment to say thank you for, for your efforts and to all the people that you noted who were involved. And just to, to say that over the last few years, we've had a range of events, and I see each time that there is this reflection and improvement of protocols and process. And so I really appreciate that, that your leadership team and all the folks that work with you are constantly reflecting on how to continue improving. Like you, you said about the last week, that it's becoming increasingly effective in terms of that response. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. We're, we're all learners here. And then, just, you know, a couple important events coming up in the near future, as many may know, next Tuesday, the high school is hosting a master schedule presentation at 7:00 PM in the theater. We're hoping a lot of folks will come out. There's information that's posted on the, the high school webpage, and we'll be growing on our website to be in more places as well. So, we're hoping that folks will be able to not only take time to come out and learn more about the proposed schedule, but to take a few minutes in advance to review materials that are posted on the website, to watch the presentations from last year, and come be engaged and learn and have your questions answered. Again, that's next Tuesday, the 11th, at 7:00 PM in the theater. And then finally, this is that time of year where we just have activity after activity of so many exciting things that are happening across the school district. So, we know that this Thursday, we have a winter concert at 7:30 PM. We also have choral concert Monday, 7:30 PM in the, and again, these are middle school, high school events, 7:30 in the theater. On the 13th, we have the orchestra concert at 7:30 PM. And then this weekend, we're hosting the Irvington Wrestling Tournament, so come out, out and root on the Bulldogs.
I want to see that. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, just one second. There is a, our agenda, and typically, you know, in terms of where our comments from the members of the community are, it's after our next session, but I'd love to move it forward. So, in terms of if you have a question or comment, I'd ask that you go to the microphone at the back, and you can make a question, pose a question or comment related to anything on. Right now, it's fine. Anybody who'd like to, to go, if you, you would just go to the microphone at the back, identify yourself, and, and we ask that you keep your questions or comments to approximately three minutes. There is, I believe there's, let me look ahead, I believe typically we have a second point. Yes, we do. Yes?
Hi, I'm Ruth Friedman, and my question is regarding the, um, the scheduling that you're doing in the high school.
High School Master Schedule, yeah.
Yeah, so when I went into the website to try to see what was going on, I don't have kids in high school yet, but hopefully I will one day. If you don't have kids in high school, it doesn't let you move forward. It asks you, you know, what you're, what student, what grade you're in.
When you fill out the, the registration for the, the meeting?
Yeah, so I couldn't get any information.
I think that's something we can adjust. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you. And I would just say that we'll, we'll double check the registration form, because we certainly want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to come. And the important part of the, the registration form is just for us to be able to plan for our audience, to have a head count, to have a sense of how many folks will be present. So, we will follow up to make sure that's there, when, but, you know, I don't want to overlook some of the other points that I made before that on the website, there are presentations from last year, a presentation, which is video, and the handout materials from last year, that are, serve as a good foundation for the conversation that'll happen next week.
Okay. I'll just walk out with this question, how's the, 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 the process of, 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 of,[433.21]
Still being developed.
Can I add something?
Sure.
And this process started back in spring of two thousand and eighteen. There was a committee, and I'm going to read it because the name of this committee is a tongue twister. The Community Capital Project Planning Committee was formed and it represents teachers, students, I believe, right?
No students.
No students.
There were no students.
Not yet.
Okay, so teachers, parents, and people, and other members of the community. How many members were on this committee, about?
Oh, like twenty something.
And members from H two M as well as a security firm that the district had hired to do an analysis of our facilities. So this committee met three or four times and they created a list of fifty-one potential projects for the Buildings and Grounds Committee to look at, to evaluate, and see what we might want to include or not include in this bond. And that's how the process had initially started.
And, you know, within that, there are some broad categories of work that we're looking to do. One of them is safety and security. Another is infrastructure, dealing with maintenance that needs to be done at our various buildings, looking to promote energy efficiency within the buildings. And then also to protect our assets, develop more storage space, both internally and externally within our, within the district, in terms of inside and outside. And then some other improvements. And then last, looking at the spaces within our buildings, libraries, classrooms, and looking to modernize the learning spaces. So those are the broad categories of work. And within them, we're going to now talk about each of the categories and some of the work that's contemplated within those categories and some initial ballpark cost numbers for those overall categories. So, so under safety and security, I think everyone's heard us talk before about one of the goals is to look at how people access the school buildings and looking to have a more uniform protocol across the buildings and a single access point, which would have a security vestibule where you have our security personnel allowing people to access the building. So one of the things that we're proposing is looking at is adding a new vestibule or addressing that at every school. Some schools are obviously easier to deal with than others. Most notably, at the high school, as you'll see in a couple of slides, it would deal with a greater reconfiguration of how we access the high school and looking really to bring the main entrance closer to where the stairs are now leading up into the building. But we'll get to that in a second. And then likewise, at the campus, where there's now many access points throughout the campus, looking to enclose those hallways and breezeways in order to, to limit the access. So you'll see here with all those boxes, those are all of our, excuse me. No, I think people can see the boxes, so.
Dotted lines.
The dotted lines, sorry, the dotted line boxes. So those are all the various entry points right now where you can access the campus. We'd be looking to enclose all those walkways to prevent people from outside accessing the campus. And then, you know, just to touch briefly, there's some other security initiatives that would include cameras, better signage, better lighting, and then also looking to install swipe card access to doors throughout all of the buildings. And, you know, if you look at, you know, this is the site plan which we were just talking about, which would also have the added benefit when we reconfigure the parking lot of hopefully adding eight new parking spaces at the campus as well.
Can I just, there's a key term that I think's been used a lot around this. Maybe you said it, but I didn't catch it, is a single point of entry?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this work makes it so that anybody coming into each of the schools, there's only one way that they go in.
Correct.
Correct.
Correct. And the challenge at the upper school, at the high school, is it needs to be ADA compliant.
Yeah, so if you go to the next slide, actually.
Oh, but if you stay on that slide for just a second, in addition to make it ADA compliant, it would also push the school buses and the way people come in and drop off a little further back. So it's, we'll get a little bit of a buffer between the road and the existing classrooms where they are, which has also been a security concern.
Yeah, so if you go to the next slide, one of the things we're talking about is that ADA compliant entryway. So obviously, that long staircase is not ADA compliant. So the idea would be to create a ramp leading up to our entry. And then you'll see there's a vestibule, there's an air force security, and then people would come into the atrium to be able to access the school. So that's the concept for the high school. And if we, Carol, go forward to the next slide.
Can I add one other item about that as well is by entering here, where currently our visitors enter over by the Gina Moore Gym, which then visitors walk unescorted through the art wing, which, you know, if we have one single entrance over here by the atrium, they can easily be guided straight to the main office and we won't have any visitors walking through the halls unescorted.
Yeah. So if you look at the next slide at.
This slide just shows the elevation and what you'd be changing over there, the ramp, and how you'd be redirecting the parking.
Could I, I just want to take a quick timeout. The expectation for trustees tonight is really just to learn about where things are. We're not, we're just digesting, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
I mean, obviously, if there's something that doesn't, you're not.
We can give you feedback.
Give us feedback, please, and we obviously have our architect partners here. If there's, you know, a particular question, but this is really more as an update so you can understand where we're at, where we're going, but also, you know, to you guys to start to be able to reflect on the scope of the project and be able to give further guidance.
Thank you.
So if you look here, you know, this is what we were talking about before in terms of the various ways that people can access the campus and looking to control these access points. And if you look at the next slide, these are just some initial renderings from the architects in terms of what those enclosures may look like down the road. So it would be both allowing light to come into the spaces, but also prevent people from getting in. And then if you go, Carol, to the next slide, this is again the middle school and what the vestibule would look like there. And, you know, it's again working with our existing space and configuring it such that we have, you know, the goal always is a man trap concept where you have two doors so that you're coming into the building, you're registering with security, and then you're being allowed to access the building after you go through security. So if we go, so that's the security overview. And the price tag for the different security upgrades at this point is just shy of two million dollars. That was on one of the earlier slides. And we've been working not only with the architects on this, but we've brought in, early in the process, a construction manager who isn't here this evening, but who's been very helpful in developing initial cost estimates for all these projects and including not just the costs, but also the escalation in terms of what it will cost to construct it two or three years from now, as well as the soft costs in terms of architect fees, professional fees, filing costs, so that we have a developed estimate to try to work with at this point.
Yes, as realistic as we can make it.
Exactly. So if you look next, everyone's favorite, which is infrastructure. I don't think anyone likes replacing their air conditioning unit in their house, but it's something that is oftentimes necessary. And there's a fair amount of infrastructure work within the district that needs to be addressed. And if you look here, you know, to take off, we have site work and paving at all of the schools. There's a portion of the roof at Dow's that needs to be replaced. There's floor abatement at both the Main Street School and Dow's Lane, renovating the girls' bathroom at the high school, and replacing the waistline at the Main Street School. So if you go to the next slide, you'll see some examples of some of our paving issues that need to be addressed. And then the next slide has some of the roof that needs to be placed, just to give you guys a little insight in terms of the current conditions. And then, you know, so there's a price tag regarding the infrastructure of about two and a half million dollars. So that's that number. Next, we talk about energy efficiency. That's replacing the boiler at Dow's Lane, replacing the exterior wall and shade panels at the high school. Those are those big concrete structures on the outside that prevent the sunlight from coming into some of the classrooms, which are in need of repair.
Picture on the, the picture on the left there.
Yeah, exactly.
Two pictures on the left.
And if you can see on the bottom, one on the bottom left, that, it's hard to see because of the shading, but it's, there's cracks in that right now, so that's part of what the issue is.
Mm-hmm. So then, you know, another thing is replacing the univents at the high school. That's how we deliver climate control to those classrooms and those units need to be replaced. And in connection with doing that, we also want to update the controls to allow more flexibility in controlling those units, provide better energy efficiency by controlling how those units are used. And along the theme of energy efficiency, also looking to replace the lights district-wide with LED lights, which will be more energy efficient, but also improve the lighting conditions throughout the district. I think anyone who's been in the Main Street Gym now can attest to the value of LED lighting and how much better it can make spaces look. And then one of the other things.
And also cooler, and also cooler.
Yes.
Which is a consideration that we need to have at this point.
That's another good point, that the LEDs produce much less heat, so they will be less heat produced within the classrooms and other spaces when you make that switch. And then we're also looking at putting solar films and other films on the windows, which will also hope to cool down those areas. And then everyone's favorite topic, air conditioning. And at this point, what we're looking at doing is to air condition some of the public spaces within the district, so that would be the Mar Gym, the Campus Gym, the Main Street School Gym, and the Dow's Lane Gym. So that way, those areas will be cooler and there'll be the added benefit that there's community programs that utilize those spaces as well, and that will make those better. We'll touch a little more on air conditioning as a whole and our thought process as a committee behind that in a couple of later slides, I know it's been a topic that everyone has been asking about, but.
Is there a quick question?
It's free.
Sure.
Just about the lights.
Yeah.
Presuming that includes putting in the, what do you call them, the things that need to go on the ceiling?
Receptacles?
Fixtures?
Fixtures.
Yeah, but they have a name, the ballasts, right? Yeah. A fixture, at this point, is the fixture for fixture budget number?
With a complete replacement, it's a.
How long do you project that that'll take? That's a long job, huh?
I don't think so, I don't think that could be long to process, it'd easily be accomplished.
It's a summer project, yeah.
Yeah.
We're not going to be resorted.
We did leave an allowance for placement, to change some placements too, where the placements would be better for the students. You know, so we did allow, put an allowance in there for that.
Right, if we want to look into pendant lighting or some other more directional lighting, that it would be more expensive than just a standard fixture. There's an allowance in there for.
In, in classrooms to put in pendant lighting, so nothing fancy, though it sounds fancy. It's so the light goes up rather than coming down, and it's easier on the kids' eyes. And you should also know that we have also explored, after one of our late meetings, our friends at H two M walked the buildings because there's always been a lot of comments that, you know, the building, the lights are always on, the lights are always on. And apparently, the lights aren't always on, they are our security lights. As per code, you need certain lights on in stairwells, you know, in an emergency, in the hallways. Every three lights, I believe, approximately, they're closed. So the lights aren't always on, they do go off, but the lights that are required to be on are the ones that are on.
So, yeah, I think I just touched on air conditioning. And one of the things that B and G has spent a lot of time looking at is whether we could add air conditioning, central air conditioning throughout all of the buildings. And when we started to look at the numbers, you were talking a number north of eight million dollars. And I think we quickly realized that that type of number was just not something that we could address through this bond. So we started to then go backwards and figure out what could we address. And that's where we came up with a proposal of those common spaces that we just talked about, as well as looking at what we currently have in our buildings. And Carol, together, a nice analysis in terms of how many window units are currently being used for classrooms across the district. And it's, as you'll see on this slide, a fair amount, where, you know, almost as high as seventy percent of the Main Street classrooms already have window units. And what we're going to look at is, through the budget process and not through the capital process, over a period of time, add window units to the classrooms throughout all of the buildings so that a hundred percent of the instructional space would have air conditioning. So that's what we're looking to do, which is really a, you know, hybrid approach of some targeted air conditioning in the instructional spaces and then addressing what we felt were the most relevant common spaces to add air conditioning to. So next, we get to what we've been referring to as protecting our assets, which goes to things such as our district vehicles. I think, as everyone knows, we don't have a garage currently to house those vehicles, so they're outside all year, they get more wear and tear than they ordinarily would. Our athletic equipment doesn't have proper storage space right now either. So we're looking, you know, one of the things we're looking to do in this bond is address those issues and add a maintenance garage. The current thinking is to locate it off of Dow's Lane, we have a slide in a little bit, which we'll talk about that. And then to add up at the field, a storage slash bathroom facility outside at the field to address that. And then there's the bleachers that need to be addressed as well. And those are the main issues that we're talking about there, Carol. And, you know, to have a cost of a little over four million dollars at this point for that work. And Carol, if you go to the next slide.
So these are our current bleachers and where we store a lot of our equipment are these little boxes that we rent. And things get, you know, they just don't last in those things. Bleachers also don't have the correct ADA or code compliance right now, so that's been an issue that we need to repair.
And if you go to the next slide, so this talks about what we're looking to do at the field. That's a stock image, it's not what we're proposing, but that's the concept, which would have all of our seating on the hillside with a home side and a visitor side in between a small press box. And then to, if you're looking at that from the parking lot to the far right, closer to the road, we'd be constructing a storage building, and I think if we go to.
It's right there on this slide.
Yeah, it's the yellow box up at the top right. And if you go to the next slide, you'll see what that building would look like. You have a large storage area for all of our track and field equipment and other equipment and the equipment to take care of the field itself. You have then also, if you notice, bathrooms being added, so this will allow for the use of bathrooms during athletic events, it'll prevent people from having to access the buildings during those events. So again, goes back to our security ideas of controlling access to our buildings. And then there'll also be an area out of which we can run concessions and have booster club activities. You know, this is something that I think is really interesting, it will hopefully keep the students over on the hillside as opposed to going off and having to go back and forth over the roadway. So it's looking at both student safety and keeping our students more a part of the athletic experience when we have homecoming and things like that, so they're not off at what was, I guess, the former Dust Bowl area and keeping people more together, so.
It's also easier to monitor the students.
Eggs, exactly.
And you should, just a couple of things. We did discuss the current tower situation and where the current bleachers are. The current tower needs a major renovation. There's leaks and there's a lot of issues with it. And the committee looked at that and determined that it just did not financially make sense to rehabilitate that now because it's just, it's in pretty bad shape. And it's just pouring more money, good money after, bad money after good money?
Whatever.
Whatever. And then one of the other things I want to also point out about the bleachers is even though that, as Brian had pointed out, that is a stock picture, the bleachers, that is a hill there. So a lot of the bleachers, a good portion of the bleachers, it's not going to be sticking out, it's going to be into the hill. So aesthetically, I, I just wanted to give you, point that out because some people might think it's just going to be glaring and big and not what it looks like now. But we are, we are going to keep it somewhat in, in like what we, what is there now, but bigger.
An appropriate scale.
In a bigger scale, but not taking up all of the grass area.
And also then we'll eventually remove the existing tower. So we also think it will just effectively look nicer when you drive up, you don't have this big ugly tower blocking the field and everything else, so. So if we go to the next slide, so this is what I was talking about as well, which is having a garage facility for all of our district vehicles. So if you look at that yellow box there in the top left, that's the current proposed location. That is the site of the basketball court at Dow's Lane. And there would be a garage built there, and then we'll relocate the basketball court elsewhere at Dow's and be building a new basketball court.
Pretty much where the red arrow would be, you know?
Yeah.
Where the old.
Field is right now.
Where the old district offices used to be. And the idea there is also, it'll make it easier for the aides and for the kids to be, to use it during recess, it allows them to use it during recess, and we have coverage with the aides as well.
And it will also open up another asset for the community to use during weekends where kids could now have another basketball court that is a modern court to play on. So there's the added benefit of that as well. So now we get to the last category, which is modernizing the learning spaces. And this is the part that is really still in development. While there's some items in there, such as renovating the locker room and casework for some of the buildings. Casework, as we've spent a lot of time talking about, is shelving cabinets, it's storage space. I think, as you see those pictures and anyone who's ever been in the art building and the music rooms, you see where we just don't have enough storage for all of that. And that's one of the things we're looking to address. But then we're also looking to address the classrooms and other spaces to modernize some of our learning spaces. That may involve the library outside here and other things at the various buildings. We're in the process of having meetings between our architects and building level administrators to talk about what they would like to see in their buildings, so then the architects can start to look at potential options and potential costs. So right now, we have a placeholder of about two and a half million dollars for that work. And as that gets developed, we'll see where we come out. But the overall budget number for this piece of it is about three point three million. So when you add all of that up, you get to a total cost of approximately seventeen million dollars. Obviously, that will depend on what rates look like at the time. We're getting closer to going out for the bond. And as we've always talked about, the goal here is to remain budget neutral, to not add additional taxes for this bond.
Would I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Just about on the modernizing of learning spaces. And I may have, I may have missed when you ran over this, that that's, that's the Main Street School locker rooms that we're talking about, or which?
No, the Mar Gym. The Mar Gym locker room.
Mar Gym locker room.
With, with the thought process is that we would then have less movement of students if we could use that gym for the high school students' PE classes. Right now, it's, they're going all the way, all the way across to the campus gym for PE. And, but part of the problem is the locker room isn't suitable for the high school. So they're using, so it's trying to make that flow better. And it's just that, that's the most outdated locker room. The Main Street School locker rooms, we don't really use their, their storage now.
So that's the overall scope at, at this point. And now we get to, you know, timeline. I think we're already at the bottom of this page, which is today's meeting. And if we go forward, this is what the timeline looks like over the next couple of months, which is, you know, over the next, you know, it's really ending now with the meetings with the administrators for then H two M to start working with their ideas to present to B and G some additional items for that modernization work. And we're expecting that to be done by middle of January, hopefully. So that way, we can give further guidance and figure out where we're at and have that proportion of the project finalized and be able to come back with more information to the board on what we're envisioning for that piece of it. And then you'll see there's time that will build in for community forums, for returning to that original committee that Maria mentioned to get their feedback and present out what the current thinking is. And then obviously, for the board to come back and have some further dialogue on the scope and where we're at with a goal of having the entire scope finalized by the end of February in order to have a bond vote in the spring.
Let's go five.
If I was a modernized learning, I just didn't want to rewrite all the words because it would have take, made this slide really small, so I just shortcut it.
That's the part we don't have estimates for.
Right, so I short cut it one through four, and then I put five, because I just, the lack of.
We're still, we're still working on it.
Yeah.
But we wanted to provide an update.
Right, but the scope five is that part you had.
Yeah, it was just too many words.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
So, you know, our goal along is to have a vote this spring. Obviously, if circumstances change or there are issues in the process, we'll look, you know, always if we need to adjust, but we really are pushing forward and devoting a lot of resources, both at the B and G level and with our architects and the administrators, to meet these deadlines because we would like to see, hopefully, a bond vote in the spring, just from a timing perspective in terms of the amount of design time and approval time. It would be advantageous in the cycle to be able to have an approved, approved bond in the spring for other planning purposes.
And one thing I just realized that we had discussed at the meeting that didn't make this slide, which we could easily, which we will share, I think to put everything in perspective, we were going to put a slide saying what we're not including in the bond from our list of fifty-two?
Yeah, well, we can summarize, I mean, a lot of the fifty-two items, it's interesting because when you looked at the original fifty-two items, many of those items were actually grouped into these, these target areas.
Right.
There was quite a lot of overlap. And, you know, when you, when you really drill it down, it, it was a lot of.
Probably like twenty, then fifty-two, when you start to.
So, so a good number are really in here, I mean.
You can see, you can see those items in the prior presentation.
Right. Yeah, so they're definitely there. And, you know, for the most part, we've, we've included just about like everything that, that really is the highest priorities and things that we really need to do, so.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, look, I think, you know.
Very responsive, I believe.
The, the only big ticket item, you know, was the air conditioning across everything that we just looked at and deemed rather quickly was just something that we couldn't tackle at this point in time. You know, one of the other things is that some of the projects, we've shifted out of the bond and into now the regular budget cycle to try to address as well, such as the new phone system is something that we're going to try to address through the budget process as opposed to the capital process. So some of the projects that were initially talked about haven't been moved, they've really just been accelerated into the regular budget cycle at this point in time, so. So that's all we got at this point.
Final step.
I don't know if there's anyone who had a particular initial question, just, you know, towards gain clarity on anything that we talked about, you know, happy to. You know, happy to do that.
Yeah, well, I definitely want to turn it over to trustees if you have some questions. But the first question I just wanted to ask in looking at the timeline is can you sort of pull out for the full board what our checkpoints are in the timeline? And what we have to do at different times?
Look, I, I think part of that is we're guided by the feedback we get from everyone tonight based on this initial check-in in terms of, you know, how much more presentations everyone's going to want to see because I think our goal is certainly to have the board give more direction and their approval to the different steps. And, you know, we're looking to obviously do that as quickly as the rest of the board is ready to go forward and address that however it needs to be done. So, I think, you know, the key is that, you know, really by the, working backwards, by the end of February, we need to have a fully formed scope so we can meet our spring deadline. And we're committed to, between community engagement and working with the board and everyone else to get the information out there so that everyone is able to weigh in, you know, to meet that ultimate goal. So, I think, you know, from, I don't know if there's, you know, a specific date really there. I think the other key will be that we're certainly going to come back soon after the Christmas break with an update on what Cal put in as scope five in terms of what that is looking like. So, there's more meat around that. But I think, you know, certainly, you know, between now and then, we're going to keep working forward on scopes one through four and, you know, look for, you know, additional feedbacks and work with our architect partners to further refine what those are going to look like and have a, you know, working on what the final presentation of those items would look like with, you know, some additional graphics and so forth.
Okay. Do you have some questions about any piece of this at this time?
I just have one question, which happens to be a visual deficit I have. The ramp will actually, in the, on September at this point, go where the steps are? The steps are removed and somehow the ramp goes up to that elevation?
It's going to be regraded. So, it's going to be more like a walkway? It's going to be regraded.
Okay, but that's, I just didn't understand.
Instead of, instead of the slope it is now, I guess it would be leveled?
Right. It'll be, yeah. I mean, there's going to be, you know, some major changes, the way it looks there, and there's going to be additional parking. Right. Where the steps are now, it's going to be regraded.
Right. So, that's going to be the main entrance for the high school, but it will be graded in a way that it's ADA compliant and accessible.
Right.
What is, you want to add to it?
The, where the main entrance to the high school is now, the sidewalk will really work its way back up to where that staircase is. So, it'll actually start to level itself off for the handicap ramp component of it. So, that's where, that's why we have those steps now. Those will essentially, you know, those will be taken away.
Thank you.
And Beth, the other thing is that there is so much site work and roadwork that needs to be improved there anyway, that we are, you know, in a sense, doing something we have to do anyway and then just improving it. So, instead of just paving it and paving the same problem area, we're actually going to improve it. That's the plan.
Right. No, I just couldn't visualize what it was on the diagram, so thank you.
So, in some ways, I mean, even as the whole, in terms of the whole capital bond, a lot of why it's happening now is because the timing is opportune, both because of the need, but also, you know, in terms of the, the... I guess, I'll circle back to the question in terms of what it means at the end to say we're, I don't know what the term is we were using here in terms of, to remain budget neutral with no additional taxes. But there's a lot of this that's, that's opportune in terms of the timing with the financial aspect of doing the bond now. But similarly, if we're going to do work, it's opportune to do it at the same time.
Right. I mean, like you probably were saying, the parking lot needs paving, no matter what. So, if we're going to do this additional site work, it makes sense to do it now and then repave. So, you're, you know, really combining two projects into one.
Efficiency, right?
Yeah.
If you could just do it at the microphone, thank you.
And part of the reason to group the site work in building projects is because there's a reimbursement that you get from the state as an incidental cost for state aid. So, if you were to do a site project on its own, you're not getting state aid. But if you're doing the site work with a building component, and there's some details into what that involves, then there's an incidental cost or reimbursement that you would get for that.
Right. And that's something we want to keep repeating is that when we do the annual capital work, do we necessarily get that type of state reimbursement?
Yeah, the, the first slide, Brian didn't really mention it, but the very first slides talked about that about 90, we estimated about 90% of the project will be eligible for aid.
So, doing it in the form of a capital bond project gives us that state aid that we wouldn't otherwise get?
Right. Thank you for pointing that out.
Maura, do you have any questions? Not to put you on the spot, or David?
If David has something he'd like to jump ahead with, I was actually trying to bring up the September presentation. Just, just to double check if there was anything that occurred to me from that. Otherwise, I, I am interested to see more, more examples of the modernizing of learning spaces. And I only wanted to offer a suggestion that in, do the bond research that I've done on other, on other districts' projects, that photographs there of what their modernized spaces looked like are, are quite inspiring, shall we say. And although it is, I think, for families in the district and also for, for me personally, when I look at how money should be spent, it's very hard in the abstract to talk about modern learning spaces as a priority. But five years out, if you go to, you know, Chappaqua or you're looking at photographs of an event at Chappaqua and you see the backgrounds of the, of the work that they've already done in this, in this area, say, as an, as an example, you start to see the differences. So, not investing anything, I think, in those, in that area would, would also be a danger, is what I would say. So, while it's, it's sometimes hard to say, oh, well, what's the value of that if we can just stay in the kind of, you know, chairs and desks that we have? So, for what it's worth, I'd just say please don't hesitate to load on the pictures when you bring that to us.
And just so, yes, we, we will give examples of, of what will be, if we end up recommending modernization. This is just a touch point. And as Brian had previously said, H2M, Carol, and the building administrators, each building administrator, they're all going to be meeting individually, not one big meeting, to see what their needs are. Because, you know, quite frankly, Deb, Brian, and I are, you know, we can't speak for David Cohen and what he envisions for his school, for example. So, those meetings are happening and this is...
That's the dates that are on that timeline.
Right. This is just an update and these meetings are happening. Like, there's a lot of stuff still going on. But point taken, we would absolutely include some visuals.
And I would also say that the drawings that you've provided for today help a great deal in, in visualizing the scope of these various projects. So, thank you for doing that work.
But I do want to just caution that a lot of the design work is going to happen afterwards. There's only so much we can do beforehand before we have an approved project. So, while we'll have some examples, it's not going to be the final design of anything at this point because you can't put the cart before the horse.
Right. And that's why, you know, even when we showed you pictures and I tried to clarify some of the stock photographs for like the Mazaris Field, for example, that's why I gave some of that background, because these are stock pictures.
Of course. Of course. And my, my point is only, only in looking at other districts and realizing that, you know, the, the pieces of this pie that we're investing are common to other districts. And just to say, we can't, you know, they have to all be addressed ultimately or they will be addressed in the future. So, more as a comment about the way that, you know, that, that, yes, it has to be stock photos, but everyone invests a piece of their bonds in this. And that's an important thing for folks to realize as, you know, we may be looking at this one bond this one time and it may be the first one that some of, some of us have looked at. But this has certainly all been done before.
As Carol says, if it's done in the future, it's more expensive, so. You know, one ask I would have maybe just for clarification for trustees and also for community members is in that, the, talking about the process of identifying how to, what and how we would modernize, is maybe there could be a sort of an outline of how, what that might look like, so.
That's what we're working on right now. So, we're still, this is why we're just, this is the piece we weren't up to yet. And so, we're 100% where we're up to, so you guys are staying current.
Thank you. Okay. Got it. So, we get a sense of what that process would be. David, do you have?
I just would like, yeah, I mean, you know, this is great and very helpful. And I'm going to reserve questions for a more full-formed finished product so that it's, the questions then have a little more substance.
My, my, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, my, my sense is looking at the, the timeline and the schedule is that, you know, when you do have that scope five, that we'll have had time to digest and reflect. And that, hopefully, that would be a time where we could give more concrete feedback about what we're learning about tonight.
Great.
You know, that was showing the idea, which was to not wait until the end to try to give a portion of it now to allow that reflection and then...
Right. But now I'll be able to ask better questions when I can build on it.
Right. And if there's anything that you see or, you know, if you can give us any feedback, if you have any feedback on things... Right. On, on what we've presented so far.
It's another visual question. That's why I think it's good to get it out here because it doesn't come across on this. So, when you move the bleachers to that side of the field, like, I'm just wondering if anyone can answer what the sun exposure is versus the... Because I, I think the safety issue is clearly laid out. That's very helpful. I hadn't thought about that. But are people going to be looking directly into a western exposure?
Beautiful Hudson sunset?
Yes.
Well, you know, for sporting events, that can cause. I just would like to know because there's no, there's no exposure on the, on that illustration.
Your mind went there.
You will be, but I think a lot of it is actually shaded by the, the trees and the houses on that side. If it's elevated, if we're elevated in front of the high school, the sun's directly in your eyes. That sits a little bit lower. Top couple rows may be rough.
It would be the same. It would be the same as the home team, the same height as the home team bleachers are now estimating. So, that way, you're not, you're not fully sitting in the sun.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Because the trees will block most of it and then the rest of it, it will, it should be sunken down.
Right. But so, like in terms of, you know, just like north, south, east, west, it's not actually direct west facing?
It is almost directly west.
Oh, it is actually.
So, if you...
But the, the sun...
If you sit more down, and then you'll be sitting looking that way. You can see the bleachers.
Okay. Thank you.
But the sun is at different points on the horizon depending on the time of the year. So, I don't, I don't know what it's like in the fall or the spring, but a lot of times it's to the south of us relatively.
It's, I live up there. It's not that bad. When we walk the dogs, it's not that bad.
We're not going to have Irvington Gate when the light is just directly coming in. It's a certain day of the year.
But no one's complained about it to date, and we have existing bleachers there.
So, that's good to know. No, thank you for clarifying it. I just couldn't tell from the illustration.
No, no. It's a good question.
Thank you.
You know, I had a, a couple of questions and, and understanding that we'll have another opportunity that we'll identify in, like, in, in early-ish January. Just, could you, I don't know, we don't have a security consultant here, but in terms of, you know, we've had a lot of, we've had discussion and a lot of, I'm sure all of us have spent a lot of time thinking about security. It's a priority of, of this work. With the security vestibules, Brian, you described a scenario, which is when an individual or two enter the school. But can you talk about how the vestibule works over the course of a day when students are arriving, when classes are going in and out, or when students are leaving? How does, how does this, what is the security of a vestibule at that time?
So, you know, I guess that all has to be worked out, Michael. But in the beginning, in the morning, the doors are open, the kids come in. You know, I think the security guard tries to identify adults at that point so that we can badge them in and let the kids go through. So, you know, we're not at the point where we have IDs for our kids. So, it's really a bit of a guesswork. But the guards are pretty good at asking the adults to say, okay, can you stay for a second and get badged in, so? And then the other piece of it is as the adults get badged in, then they're wearing the colored lanyards that each school has now as they're walking through the building. And they don't have one, someone's going to stop them and say, where are your lanyard? So, you need to go back to the security. So, if they do sneak through, they're able, they have to go back. And we'll still have, you know, I, I envision still needing potentially the roving guard for that, you know? I don't know. We'll have to see in a couple of years how things are in the security world. But that would also assist with that.
So, the lanyards are, that, that sounds like, that's something we've implemented and very helpful for identifying who is employee or who is not. So, but you're saying with the vestibules, when students enter, those doors are open?
In the morning, those doors would be open, you know, in the beginning of school. You're not going to...
And when, and when, and when a class leaves, they would be leaving en masse or re-entering en masse as well?
I mean, that has to be worked out by the principals.
But theoretically, they wouldn't be going through, like, for example, at the high school level, they're going to be traveling within the campus. They're not going to go out of the school to come back into the school.
Yeah. The other, the other piece, Michael, is that, you know, in, and Brian didn't touch on it that much, but there's one piece of it in, in here, which is to add the, the card access door entry system, too. So, that's going to enable staff who are coming in early to use that card key system to be able to open that door when it's locked. So, really, you're going to only be opening those doors when, you know, at the beginning of school, at, at, you know, certain times, those key times. And the rest of the time, we're going to be using our swipe card system. And that's also going to allow us to lock down the buildings very quickly. So, it's going to enable every classroom to lock down. And part of that is that some of our doors right now, we have to change the locks anyway. So, you know, we have some locks that are not compliant in both Dow's and Main Street School. So, it's, it's part of this process because we might, we have to do it anyway. Why would I want to change the door lock and then again, change it again in another year?
Right. So, the door, the door entry system gives you the opportunity to...
To meet both requirements, yeah.
I think the balance of it is becomes the human behavior and establishing protocols in how you're going to supervise and monitor arrival and dismissal.
With everything comes, comes, you know, time that we're going to have to spend on being thoughtful on our processes and, and, and working with our consultants to do all that. But at the point right this minute, we haven't, I wouldn't say I would commit to you that we've thought everything out, so, no. But...
So, but, so just to go back to the vestibules specifically, those are effective in, in the times when schools in session, students have already entered or, or before they've left? And just to go back to what you were saying, are there times, particularly when we're creating single points of entry? I assume we want that to also be the main exit point. Are there times, you said a lot of times the kids are, the students are able to move around within the campus, but when they're going to certain gym, you know, physical education classes, they're, they're going out of the, the building to other locations?
Yeah, but they're going to stay within now the perimeter that we've created because we're enclosing the walkways. So, they're not going to be outside of now the full perimeter that's going to be enclosed.
But aren't they using, do they use the field with Paramount or no?
Yeah. I mean, they'll still go to a PE class outside. There's, you know, there's going to be some things to work through.
So, when we think about PE classes, you're going to think about recess at the elementary and middle school, there's still going to be that. Right. Right. At the other schools, there's, there's the students going out and of course they...
But, you know, again, there's supervision at those times. There's duty periods, there's teachers monitoring hallways. I mean, we're still going to have all those things in place. It's not like we're saying, okay, we're secure now, we don't need to do any of that. I don't envision that happening. But, I mean, that would be obviously an issue that our principals will work through.
Yeah. I really, I really appreciate the explanation about the, the lanyards and about the, the card entry system. I guess I, I have questions that I'll follow up on with our next meeting about the, the particular value of, of the vestibules themselves. And I would be interested in understanding what the cost of the vestibules are in, in the work that we're doing.
Yeah. I would like to join with you on that because that was a question that was in my mind during the presentation, sort of the ratio of the cost of the vestibule system to the entire cost of that item.
So, we will give you all the breakdowns at, at a point when we have a better sense that the numbers are, are completely accurate, so.
Thank you.
To the best of our ability, accurate, but yes.
Right. No, thank you. I mean, this is, this is really great. The other question, I got a sense the, the storage facility at Mazaris would be about 2,000 square feet?
I think it's about 3,000, right?
2,500? All right. And then, and then...
You've been looking for this storage facility for...
And then, so then going back to the storage facility at Dow's Lane?
That's a garage.
3,500, I think, or...
That's the garage for the trucks?
Right.
I'm sorry, what was the number?
I think we use 3,500.
Also 3,500? 2,500?
No, no. 1,500. That's bigger.
2,500 on the campus. And 3,500 at Dow's.
And then how many cars does that fit? Is it three car garage?
The plows.
And the trucks?
Yep.
So, all current equipment? So all current equipment?
Yeah.
Essentially. You know, we considered putting the bathroom building with that building, but depending on, because of the location, because now we're recessing it down below, that bathroom wouldn't be that accessible to the public there, so we're actually having a different location for the outdoor bathroom at Dallas. So, you know, that was the consideration, to put it with the building and then, or to make it separate, so.
So the outdoor bathroom is not a part of this plan?
It is, at Dallas, and I'm at Dallas.
You know what, that's my mistake that I didn't include that on the slide.
I didn't mention that?
It was there.
It was there?
The words were there, but not the picture.
But not the picture?
Not the picture? The words.
We skipped over it in the explanation.
Well, because I don't have a picture yet, I don't think, so...
Well, not a picture, but a face, a little colored box.
Standing on the outdoor bathroom at Dallas, okay, I did put it there.
And then go, you can point to where it would be.
We kind of discussed it loosely.
Because there's still a couple of different ideas that we're talking in terms of location.
Yeah, we haven't really totally cited that one yet.
Right.
We haven't...
Can I ask, the outdoor bathroom, it's a great idea, right, for field use and whatnot, but the, is the, where is the town participating in funding that at all? Like, why, why, has that been discussed at all or, you got a face, okay?
Yeah, I mean, we, we'll continue to discuss that with us.
And I might ask on the garage too, I thought there had been some conversation of possible shared services on the garage because the town has a, has a need for that as well for their vehicles.
Yeah, we've had conversations, what we're currently envisioning would be a school district facility only because at that space, it would only accommodate our needs and would accommodate the town needs, so we've certainly looked into the shared space concept, we're still exploring some options, but I think, at this point, we have to plan that it would be something that we would do entirely for this process, if that changes throughout the process, we can make adjustments, but I think from a planning perspective, we should be looking at it right now as something we're going to do ourselves and we need a placeholder.
Something changes, yes.
Right, something we need to placeholder for that.
Just said they're out of space because we've asked to be part of their space and they wouldn't, they can't accommodate us, but so they're, they're looking for more space right now as well, we're all looking for space, basically.
Thank you.
And then, I just think every time we do this, we have to try a variation of explaining this goal of remaining neutral, whether that's budget neutral, I mean, we have the term here, no additional taxes, we already know that some people have misunderstood that that means that our school taxes won't go up, that's, this is just one component of the cost of running our schools.
Right, so debt service is part of our budget and every year we're paying toward our previous bonds that we've already approved, one of those bonds will expire by 2020, 22, 23, so that's when we would look to start the financing for this and slide the interest from, the principal and interest payments for this new bond to replace what was the same, basically the same amount of principal and interest from the previous bond so that it would have no impact increasing on the budget, so it would be the same amount of money.
So debt from prior projects is expiring and we will replace it with this?
That's what it means to be budget neutral. So if, so part of the problem is that I have to make sure we're not going to exceed, you know, when I put that 17 million up there, that's the placeholder right now because we're still looking at what that number exactly going to be with the interest rate calculations and fortunately, we're thinking interest rates are still pretty favorable again, so, you know, and we'll have to continue that, so long-term rates haven't risen that much.
Yeah, but that's also another reason why we're looking to try to do this sooner rather than later because as the process goes longer and longer, our ability to look at what rates may be in the future get more difficult.
Yeah.
So I just want to, and then if there are no additional questions, by saying, you know, it's clear, a lot of diligent work has occurred with the committee in the spring with the buildings and grounds and thank you to Brian, to our members, Carol who's helping lead the process.
H2M.
And H2M.
Very H2M, Trenton.
Did I say Trenton? H2M, I pointed at...
If he doesn't come, then he gets all the credit, right?
Yeah, I'm going to say, H2M, thank you for all your efforts and for coming.
At the next meeting, we'll tell Kevin. Now he just has to do more stuff.
Yeah, yeah, next time it's his turn, but thank you for coming to help illuminate our, the work that's going on and clearly you're doing a lot of, asking the questions that we would be asking as a board and vetting this for us so that, obviously, the questions we have at this point are, are fewer than they might be, but we thank you for that work and for the pace and for the chance for we as a whole board and as a community to weigh in and to understand the process. Do, I do want to give a chance, do our community members have any questions related to the presentation? If you want to go to the microphone and share your name and...
Purple Lady.
Tommy, if you could, please, if you would. Really, just a quick comment first, thank you for the presentation, it was very informative and helpful and understanding, you know, kind of what the process has been so far. And to piggyback a little bit on what I think Michael was saying about timelines and talking about timelines and what is benchmark, you know, just sitting here and listening to that, for example, if you were, now that you are sending out an email in the morning, but let's say you were about this discussion, you could say things like, over the next 12 weeks, we're going to, you know, try to come to an agreement about what the proposal might be, and I, and I think it's really important for people to understand that, and I know you guys, among your group, all of you have good presentation skills and think about these things, I think the more you can put in phrases and information about the timeframe that not only are informative, but also give people a sense that this really isn't a rushed process, that you've gone through a lot of work so far and that you're still going to be going through a lot of work, it will help people feel, I think, that it's not, you know, all of a sudden we're doing this.
Yeah, no matter what, I remember being in that place years ago and when you discover, when you haven't been focused on it and you suddenly discover, you're like, but what about, what about, and when you dive in, you realize there's a lot of work that's been going on, so thank you for that, but yeah, we want to, we want to...
And, and we are, we were planning on putting together an FAQ that will be put on the website, we are going to be highlighting when we're having, because tonight, you called it a presentation, tonight was not a presentation, it was an update from the BMG to the, to the board. When we do plan on having those bigger meetings, we will be highlighting that and communicating that out with the community, even though we've been talking about it and talking about it and it's been in our board briefs and everything else, but we will bring attention to it, and so we're right there with you, thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you, we want to do our best to get the word out, make sure people understand. One of our other community members.
I remember Steve, the county number three graders, I mean, I do find you can be really helpful, so thank you, and I hope that the community is paying attention to you now and everything else, because, you know, we're all in the data for this, just take that off of what Tommy said, I think also just giving those concrete dates, like, they're finalizing on 2/1, I think, if that works, so I think just throwing that date out there in the community, like, that's the date that this is being finalized and it goes to vote on 5/1, so you can't show up on 5/20 and say, and you can't, but, it will be a little change. I just have a couple of questions, so I noticed that we're going to get the solar panels or films going on the windows, are we thinking of solar at Dallas and you also go booting sort of things to me, is that an option or is that cost prohibitive?
So we have done some meetings with solar representatives, I've met with some, and at this point, pretty much, it's going to be cost prohibitive to include within the capital project, that's not to say we couldn't do an energy performance contract at a future date with, for solar, but it's very little return at this point for, and it's a lot of expenditure, so if we do it, we probably have to do a purchase power agreement where they, they pay for that and then you get the energy. I mean, it's something we have to spend a little more time on.
Is there any advantage, kind of, to have the, if you're getting together while you're figuring, is that possible or not?
It's, again, putting the panels on is an expensive proposition.
I think you have a lot more insight about the modernization, they're all visualists, so they're different people, you do visualize things, having a more modern space is kind of important for attracting, continuing to attract people to your community, because if they look at our facilities and the modest, which doesn't necessarily mean that they're modest, should, but if they're modest, pretty, at Chappaqua, then the instinct is to go to Chappaqua because it's prettier, which may be false, but it's just the way we all think, we're visualists, so I do think that there's, you know, tremendous value in modernizing the space, whether or not you can do that, I'm not, I'm not sure.
I would say we always appreciate thinking around the aesthetics, but ultimately, it's also about the, the learning experience of the students.
Unfortunately, we have the people that are looking at, make sure that this is going to be really, 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 I do have just, I'm just seeing more right now, what's, what is the interest rate that you think we're going to pay on the bond and when are we able to lock in that?
Well, right now, you know, it's anywhere between, people are predicting between three and four and a half, so, you know, we're looking at certainty, we won't have certainty on that, but we're going to be coming with, you know, the capital advisor that we work with will be giving us a much better number shortly, but he's, he's right now saying anywhere probably like high three.
And why do you think we need to lock in a lot?
Well, we really can't lock in until we actually go to borrow, but we, we will lock in as a number that we're going to have to use for estimates and then, you know, we'll have to do some financial wizardry at a certain point.
Your expertise is well...
Yeah.
And how long is the bond, considering the bond, ten or thirty?
Again, that's a choice the board will make, it could be 15, it could be 20.
And I have a question, I just want to, I'm familiar with the state aid reimbursement, so are they going to say, like, see 90% state aid or are they going to supply state aid and stuff?
No.
They're seeing, it's going to be reimbursement.
No, 90% is state aid eligible.
Elig, oh, okay.
90% of the projects.
Projects, not, yeah.
But the aid is, the aid is up to 29%.
Currently, our aid ratio is 29%.
Okay, that's what I was going to say.
90% would be great, can we get that?
If we're very poor, we could, upstate gets that.
Upstate gets that, they have some very nice football fields up there.
Oh, really? So 30, so that helps you point out kind of the 17 million, essentially, for the best bond?
Seven, 29% of the, of the, 90% of the 17 million.
Okay.
90% of the 17 million would get 29%.
So, so figure about $15.3 million and then 29% of that, so...
All of this will go into presentations that we make.
Okay. This is totally a random question, but I remember the town hall paper coming in and looking at the issues, we didn't have a issue.
Last year.
About last year, about the basement and Main Street School, is that happening and does that impact any of this project?
There's still, I, I, I don't know a lot, but maybe you know as much, but they're, they're still trying to figure out their fundraising potential for that, so it's, it's still far off, it's still way off, it's still way off.
But at the same time, nothing that we're doing here would, would be an impediment to that or would be something that would, you know, cause a problem if that materializes down the road.
So it's not just looking at...
No.
And I couldn't come to the last meeting, but can I just ask what the highlights, what was the tagline about more lineups? Maybe that's...
More to come.
Well, and I guess, and we said in, we said in December, so I think we, we had, you had a draft document and we should probably plan on releasing that in the near future explaining the work that you've done. You kind of, you kind of shared it verbally, but we can put it in print.
Erin, I thought you were here, it was actually, because we didn't say anything at the last meeting, it was, I want to say two meetings ago.
Two meetings ago.
I was looking right at you.
You were, you were there, you were there.
When Steve mentioned that the meeting, when I was giving, that there was a curriculum on...
No, no, he was referring to two meetings, three meetings back.
Oh, okay.
Two meetings back.
I thought you meant the, sorry.
No, the one that, you were there, you were there.
You were here, no, you could hear for that.
We don't want you to miss...
The curriculum meeting after that was strictly preparation for last, last, the last board meeting.
You're one of our top two attendees, so we'll make sure that...
We didn't miss anything.
Do I get this for you? We just...
Well, I, we're, we're definitely...
We'll give you one of those little gold stars.
I like, yeah, we need to, we need to gamify attendance here so that people feel rewarded.
Oh, we should.
Yes, there we go. So thank you very much for the, the questions from the community. So we're going to move to the business of the board, our consent agenda, can I get a motion to accept our consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, so, Brian and Dave, and in this, we have special ed agreements, transportation, we have some personnel matters related to clubs and faculty.
Thank you.
And I want to thank, yes, thank you, H2M, we want to acknowledge, well, I'll acknowledge that in a second, any questions before I call for votes? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, so I'd like to thank the PTSA, as always, they continue to be such strong partners and supporters of the work of our schools and in this meeting, we have approved grants from the PTSA for Americana Exhibits and Antique, Antiques Irvington, Knockout Tournament, their DC trip, and the IMS Literacy Magazine. Additionally, there was the Treasury Report and the Tax Cert. So with that, we do have opportunity for more community comment, but I feel like...
We're done.
We have some great participation.
The community's leaving.
So with that, I will share that our next meeting is Tuesday, December 18, here in the campus presentation room, and I will call for a motion to go into executive session